My guest today was a City of Waterloo councillor. She was first elected in 2006 and represented the Lakeshore Ward until she stepped down in 2022. I'm pleased to have her here with us today to share her story and adventures during her 16 year career as a municipal politician. I'm pleased to welcome Angela Veeth to the Old Gray Mayor's Podcast.
Thank you, Rob, for having me.
Yeah. Did I say your last name correctly?
Veeth, that's right.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I was gonna check and then I remembered, I forgot, but I'm glad I got it right. So yeah, so listen, Angela, thanks a lot. You know, I've interviewed a lot of Waterloo politicians as part of this podcast and they're all female. I think the females are the more interesting people coming out of Waterloo. So.
I'm not a good at disagree with that.
Of course, I'm just kidding, but I'll have to reach out to some of the other people. But so I want to start Angela with, you know, how you got interested or decided to run municipally here in Waterloo?
Well, it wasn't something that I had aspired to be or ever thought I would ever do, but people started just, you know, suggesting that, oh, you should run for city council, you know, you've got some experience in the community, you're known. And at the time I was, I had, I had chaired the Waterloo Communities and Bloom Committee to international win eventually over the years. And then I became a judge, a provincial judge. And so I got to travel all over Ontario to different communities and I met mayors, councillors, community members, and Communities of Bloom is a really positive, positive program. So I, you know, and they took me on tours and I got to see the community, talk to people. So that inspired me. And then also like before that, when I was, you know, doing the local work, I, you know, we would have events through with Communities of Bloom and I'd invite the mayor and the councillors and that kind of thing. And sometimes, sometimes I was disappointed by.
By the attendance?
By the lack of attendance, right? So someone said to me, actually, I'm not going to say many names today, but Peter Wolstenkroft said to me, why don't you run? He was so, he, that was one of the first bug, right?
Okay, so we have a name. Now we know who to blame. Okay.
Anyway, and you know, Lynn was the mayor at the time and.
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn Wolstenkroft.
Yes, yes. She, she was an inspiration to me. So, you know, Peter said it and a couple other people had kind of dropped the, dropped it in my ear. So then I thought, you know what, why not? Why not? Like, why don't I give it a try? So 2003, put my name on the ballot. And yeah, I.
Well, let me ask you before we get into the 2003 campaign. So just on the roots to bloom, how, so you were used to became a judge, you became a judge of blooming competitions?
Yeah, it's called Communities of Bloom and it's a whole, you should Google it.
Not familiar with the concept. I mean, grew up in Waterloo, so I know the, you know, we're not only smart, but I guess we're, we're powerful in the spring.
But it takes, it takes into all, it takes in heritage. It takes in how you take care of your turf, how you, you know, floral arrangements, all that, like it's a, it's a package. And it did a lot. It was a really good program for those communities that hadn't been forced to amalgamate back in, whenever that was with Michael Harris. So it brought these communities together. They had something to work on together. And it was just a really positive experience. So, so there's criteria and you rate each community as you judge, as you judge them, right?
And you mentioned about inviting mayors and councillors. And I think that's something that's kind of leads to this whole concept of, you know, people think of councillors as those people around the horseshoe that make the decisions. But that's sort of almost like a tip of the iceberg of the job, so to speak.
Well, in my, in my opinion, I, I think if you've been elected, people have gone out, voted for you, I think they should see you out in the community. And that's always, you know, it's some, and I, I had the privilege of not having a, having to have a full-time other career. So I had more flexibility in that regard. So.
I know in talking to Ken Seeling, he always said it was a great way to get out and, and get a pulse of the community and hear from people, you know, have these conversations, not only about what they're doing, but also hear from them about the concerns they have because they don't, not everyone appears at a council meeting all the time.
No, very rarely. Yeah. So, yeah. So that for me, I think that you need to, you need to touch base with your constituents and not just the constituents that live in your ward. I take a, I always took a broader view of my role on council that I'm a councillor for Ward Three, but I have to take into consideration the entire community, right? So when I vote on an issue, it's not just about my ward, it's about the entire community.
Yeah, and we get that at the regional level too. You know, if you're elected from Kitchener or Waterloo, but you've got to have this, or you're a township mayor, but you soon recognize whatever benefits one part of the whole region benefits everybody. So it's gotta have that holistic view of everything. If you get parochial, then it stunts things, nothing really advances, right?
Right. And sometimes you get in trouble with your own constituents. You know, they might not think that that was the best thing for my, for our ward, but.
Does that come up with the uptown versus the suburban type discussions?
Well, no, like I never really had those kind of discussions, but I've always been of the mind that your, your core, and I found quotes that I, from the paper, when I said that, that, you know, people will want to, if people want to come here and live here, they've got to, you can't drive through your uptown and see vacant stores, right? They, it has to be vibrant. There has to be people.
Yeah. And that's, that's actually an interesting common theme. And some of the older mayors I've talked to, especially in Kitchener, Richard Christie, talking about the, their downtown and how it was devastated over time. And, and the amount of work that goes into trying to figure out, what do you do with your core to revitalize your core? Just chatted with John Gazola and we had a quick reference to the old city hall and the decision back then, you know, we look at it now and just cry over losing that city hall. But back then, there's, you know, they, they had reports and reasons and concerns about the dying, decaying downtown and what they thought this new center was going to bring to the overall downtown. And so you make some of these decisions. And yeah, it's tough. I guess that leads to the other discussion. Politics is the only thing that like, you know, you can have your own little business and do things and make your own decisions. But in politics, you're making decisions in front of the, under the glare of the microscope of the public and the press and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's talk about 2003 then. So you got some, you know, you got a tap on the shoulder from high above and you had some other people whisper into your ear about running. And so, but there must have been something that you were seeing in the community that you felt you wanted to try to address as a councillor in terms of running.
Yeah. And I, I, a big thing for me at the time was, and it was all, it was the whole environmental, the naturalization of areas, pesticide free, that was a big topic at the time. And, and I get it. And I, so that was, that was one of the main issues, what made things that I ran on and growth for the city. And, and the, and at the time, there were a lot of students living in my ward, living in how, like basements of houses. And so I, I wanted, I wanted more conversation or I wanted the relationship between students and, and the citizens in my, in my ward. This is more focused.
University students.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So, you know, when I was knocking on doors, I would, you know, and it was in the papers and, you know, North Dale area was dealing with that. But so when I was knocking on doors, it was like, yeah, this is a, this is an issue. People, like people that have lived on a small quiet street in the ward, all of a sudden had next door to them, a new owner, and they were renting out the basement to students. And there was, you know, it was noisy after midnight. It was, you know, all those kinds of things, right?
Yeah, there were tons of those townhomes were rented out to students for, for housing before we had those big towers on Regina.
Yeah, yeah. But even, even single family bundles were being rented out, you know? So, so that was something I wanted to kind of work at as well, if I was elected. So those were.
So when you, when you say work at, did you have a policy on that or an idea or anything when you were running on what you wanted to do?
No, but I think I wanted the city to be more make or encourage landlords to be the more responsible, right? And, and then, and after I was on council, you know, of course I learned a lot more, but a lot of students were living in like in squalor and, you know, houses that, not so much in my neighborhood, but you know, there are additions and additions onto houses and students, some are living in closets, right? And they weren't, no one knew that there was no address for these students. Some of them didn't have windows, they, you know, anyway. So anyway, that, I mean, that came along after, but I think that was a red flag for me as, you know, running in the election. And it was something that actually we ended up, you know, taking care of basically down the road.
Yeah, that's actually a good point. By getting out there and campaigning, you know, you're living your day-to-day lives, you're, and you're out for walks on sidewalks and you don't see anything. But as a candidate, now you're knocking on doors and you're, you know, you're right there seeing what's going on.
And hearing it from, you know, people that, so, so yeah, that was, that was a big thing was this. And now it's, the neighborhood's very different.
Yes, yes. And we'll get to that. We'll talk about that later. But so, okay, so 2003, you run and you're, who was your main opponent at that time?
Can I, I guess I can say names. So I put my name in Judy Greenwood Spears. So she threw her name in and I'm going Judy. We're, and we were neighbors, like, oh, so yeah, we live like steps from each other. So and I knew Judy, right? Through all the environmental stuff. So she throws her name in and then eventually Jim Bolger decided he wanted to run. And then a young man named Mike Carrigan, who I should Google him and find out what happened to him or where he is now. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So there were four of us in the race. So, and yeah, Bolger, my, Jim beat me by 50 votes. And yeah.
Oh, so you came in second. So it was a close one.
It was a close one. And then, then my husband and the people that knocked on doors for me were saying, you have to have a recount, you have to have a recount. And I'm saying, no, we don't have to have a recount. I'm fine, but we did. But we did, we did. So that was an interesting.
Did it come back at 50 or was it different?
Yeah, it came back at 50. Surprise.
Okay. I find not too much changes on recounts by, by much generally. So, okay, so 2003, you come in second, it was so close. I guess that left the fires burning in you to want to try again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the people that, people that helped me out, my, you know, my volunteers, my friends, they, you know, I kind of felt like I had to, I had to do it for them as well, right? Because they worked really hard. And, and then the whole thing about, oh, if I don't, I'm going to regret it. Like, how do I know? I mean, you don't know, right?
It's good to have personal challenges too, right? And to step up. So now there was some ward boundary changes though, right? Between 2003 and 2006? What, what happened then?
Yeah. So the, the council, I guess it must have been the council that got elected.
Yeah.
The five, there were five males, the age white males and.
Okay, right. Five councillors who happened to be male.
Yes, yes, that's right. And a male mayor. So anyway, they, they put together a community, a team of citizens to look at the board boundaries. So that, that, which was great. That came back and they decided that we needed two more wards.
Okay, so there'd be eight, eight, okay, seven wards and a mayor.
Yes.
So eight people around the horseshoe.
Yes, yeah. So.
So then Jim Bolger was an incumbent that you ran against in 2006 or was he in a different ward?
No, he was in a different ward.
Okay.
So he ran a ward, which was then Ward Two, which that was the ward that he and I had run in in 2003. So ward change or boundary change, he's in Ward Two, I've been Ward Three. New, new.
Okay. And in 06, did Judy throw her hat in the ring again?
No, but Pauline Richards did, who, and Pauline again, Pauline and Judy were the two, they were amazing environmental, and they still are.
Advocates, yeah.
Advocates, yeah. So she threw her name in as well as a young man named Trevor Archer. Again. Yeah.
You can check him out later.
Yeah, yeah, I will. Yeah. So, and I won that. I didn't look at the results, but it's.
Yeah. So now you're, you're new. How did you generally find your, oh, but this was a big change election, wasn't it? 2006, right? Why don't you just talk about that for a second?
So in 2006, the, we ended up with a majority of women on council. So Brenda Halloran won the mayor's seat and Karen Cobiello, C and at the time Cobiello, won the ward two. So I think, I believe it was just her and Jim Bolger in that ward. So she beat the incumbent Diane Freeman won in Ward Four. So here's four new women on council and two, I believe it was Ian McLean and Mark Whaley, and then Scott Whitmer won that year, that time as well, because I think somebody stepped aside. But anyway, so it was a big change for the city Waterloo. And I found I have a photo of us, the three of us, Karen and Diane and I at the library, you know, just after the election. It was, it was really, it was really exciting and it was really cool. And.
Was this post RIM? Was this, was RIM an issue?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no. It was way, way, wow, way past.
Way past, yeah.
Yeah. But it was interesting reading the articles in the Chronicle leading up to it about, you know, fiscal responsibility, all those things. And it all went back to RIM Park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, look, it was a traumatic blow to the community, but you know, the community did overcome it and, and worked through it.
Right, right. And I think the other thing I realized after I got in was staff were very, very tentative about suggesting new projects or new, doing new things because of course, you know, they, they felt they had probably maybe had a part or they, you know, it affected them too as a staff member. So.
Right, right.
Yeah, we tried to.
Yeah, because you'd have that obligation over, you know, it's a bit of a dark cloud overhanging your budget process as you're trying to, trying to find some flexibility to do some innovative things you'd like to do. And yet that's still, still hanging over.
Still hanging over. Yeah, yeah. But.
Okay, so this, this, this governance thing is new for you then, right? I mean.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. And the, the hardest, the biggest, or the most interesting part for me was in camera session. So you're in camera with, you know, and everything's way over my head. And you can't talk about it. You can't talk about it with anybody outside.
So just, yeah, just to explain for the listeners, in camera is like a closed committee meeting. And there are certain things that you can do in camera, but, but it's very restricted because the view is most of the activities of municipal government or any government should be done for the public view. But if you get into things like sale of land, because you don't want the municipality to end up, you know, if it's known that municipality is interested in some property, lo and behold, prices go up and speculation happens, et cetera, or staffing, employment issues, or a legal issue. Obviously those things have to be done in closed session privately. Because, because again, it's for the betterment of the community that those matters are dealt with that way. Because you don't want to, you know, suddenly have to pay more money, you know, it's, that's a tax dollar issue, et cetera. But, but that's all new for you then, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the other part of it too is like just sitting at the horseshoe. Like I had been in council chambers many times as a delegate or just listening or whatever. But when you're sitting up there in that chair and my, you know, should I ask a question? Should I put my hand up? And then when I would write things down, my hand was shaking. So it was just all those first time jitters, right?
Yeah, no, totally. You know what? It's totally understandable because it's, it's new and that's, that's the natural reaction to it. Let me ask you, having been a delegate and, and you'll, and you go up there and you speak for your five minutes or however long it is, and you didn't, and you didn't get any questions. How did you feel about that?
I would feel like if I didn't get any questions, they must understand what I'm saying.
Okay, so it was okay with you?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But I had gone because I was campaigning or I was, you know, wanted to get this position. I wanted to show up. I went to many, many council meetings just to sit and listen, take some notes, watch, you know, watch how they interacted with each other. So.
While you were, so between 2003 and 2006, did you do that?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So that was part of your getting up to speed, so to speak.
Right, right. And.
So having done that though, having done that, and then once you're actually in that chair.
It's different, very different. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
After a while though, you, you get into a groove, right?
Yeah, for sure, for sure. And I had, I actually knew a few of the staff members because of the volunteer work that I had done at the city. So, you know, I kind of had a couple people that I could, you know, I could chat with after I got elected. And, and the other funny thing about that is they would call me councillor before they called me Angela. And I was, oh councillor.
That, right. I mean, yeah, look, I'm, I'm a lawyer. That's my profession. That's my career. But when you get elected, now suddenly you're like councillor or when I was mayor, you're worship. And it just felt awkward because that's not how, in one, one day, one vote suddenly changed that whole process. And you say, well, no, just, and you want to say, just, just call me Angela, just call me Rob, right?
Yeah.
Sort of thing. But, but there is a bit of a, you know, I guess some formality needs to be in there, but that doesn't mean you can't have a collegial working relationship.
For sure.
But yeah, I think it's, I think there has to be some formality in there just to define roles, so to speak. But you're right, it is an awkward, funny experience when they start. Cause I know when I'm at the region even now, having been there before, but even now, and they'll say councillor Deutschmann or my emails are councillor Deutschmann. It's like, oh, okay. Just it's more formality than I'm used to. I know my friends would have other words for me, but wouldn't start with councillor.
Other titles.
So, so, okay, so you're first there then. So for a new councillor, what were some, like giving advice to somebody who's just getting there, just elected for the first time, what would you say would be important, knowing now what you know, right? Do you know then?
Yeah, I would say just to listen. Like I think listening is really important. Write things down and don't be afraid to ask for information or help or advice, right? And I think, because when I first got elected, I thought, oh, I don't need somebody to take care of my calendar for me. I could do it myself. Well, that did last very long.
Cause like you said, there's a lot of, we were talking about earlier, a lot of activities and things and things to visit, right? Things that are going on in the community.
Yeah. And, you know, ribbon cuttings or grand openings. I, I cut the ribbon at Mel Lasman's store there in Kitchener. I don't know why a Waterloo councillor was there, but.
A bad boy?
Bad boy. Yeah. I have the ribbon, a big, a big velvet red ribbon in my scrapbook.
Interesting, interesting.
Yeah. So it was, yeah, it was very interesting. And, and you know, there's somebody, that's another thing for me. There's somebody that's going to do all this for me? Oh.
Some staff.
Yeah.
Don't get me started on the staff thing, but anyway.
No, they were, they were great.
So you're in the community, you're, you're chatting with people and stuff. And I want to get into the fluoride question. We're going to jump right into it because I, that came out of discussions you had with people in the community, right? I mean, that wasn't on your, that wasn't on your radar when you ran.
No, not at all. I had no, I've never, I mean, I've heard of it, but I.
Yeah. But it didn't come up in 2006? Like you're knocking on doors and people are talking to you about speeding or other things in the neighborhood? No one said anything about fluoride?
No, 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 no. But what I, what I did, I was, when I was knocking on doors, there was one gentleman in my ward who talked to me about it. So thanks, I'll look into it, right? And then I get elected. And then I, there's a, I find out there's a, a few citizens that are, that have, well, one in particular, who has had health issues and, and had done, and she's a science girl. She did a ton of research and figured out that after she eliminated anything with fluoride, including the tap water, like she had fibromyalgia kind of symptoms. And yeah, so anyway, I met with her. I forget, I guess she called me up after I got elected. So I met with her and I had known her because she was a neighbor, but then she had moved out of the neighborhood. But had a nice conversation with her. She told me, and like hydrofluoro-salicylic acid, like it took me ages to be able to pronounce it, right? But she had this all down. She had done a ton of research. She was trying to find more information. So I said to her, I said, well, if it's, if it's that horrible, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be difficult to turn it off, right? So I connected with another friend of mine who I thought, you know, he's, he does, he's pretty smart, does a lot of research, whatever. I'll connect these two, right? So we did, got together and he took it on. And yeah, so that's when the fun began.
So the first person, the doctor or the.
The constituent over in.
Yeah, but the first person had done research. What was, she, she wanted to advocate to have the fluoride removed?
Yes, yeah.
And then this other individual, the second individual you connected, he had, was he the one you met during your campaign?
Uh, I don't remember.
Okay, but he was interested in this topic.
When I called him and, and asked, told him about this, he goes, yeah, sure, I'll meet with her, right? So, and he, he didn't know anything about it, as far as I know, but he started digging around and was going, wow, like, oh my God, we need to get this out of the water.
So this is like 06, 07, around that time?
Yeah, 07, yeah, 08, yeah.
So doing some, doing some research. So then what, what came out of that then? What happened next?
So there was a group of people and, and I, they included me in the group of, and I don't know how we found or how they got together. But so they started having meetings, talking about all this stuff and, you know, kind of strategizing how to, how to eventually get, get it turned off. They came to, they came to council and I supported, like I was, you know, thank you. And then, yeah. So.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on. So they came to council and presented and made a pitch about removing fluoride from the water?
Yeah. And all the health, all the health issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get into a debate about whether it's good or bad. I just hear about process.
Right, right.
So they made their presentation and obviously they wanted it removed from the water. So what happened next?
Well, and they were lobbying, right? They were lobbying councillors and they were lobbying the region. And so they were getting interest from the press because I, I have the, every article. And they were trying, they were also, they're trying to get, gather information. So they were going to the, you know, the Ministry of Environment, the Ministry of Health, all those, all those places, right? And, and the region to get, to find out more about the product, how much goes in, all that stuff. So eventually they staff, it was probably me that requested or asked for a report or staff might have offered.
Right, okay. So here's a good point. So whenever there's something new or something you want to look into as a councillor, it usually starts with, you'd like to get a staff report about some issue. Now, in order to get a staff report though, you can't just, you can't just initiate that on your own necessarily. It's usually council has to agree or a majority of council has to agree because now you're asking staff to do some work that wasn't really contemplated for them to do because they have a whole lot of other things to do as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But they did, right?
So you brought, so you brought a motion forward or you made a request that staff would investigate, what? The removal of fluoride from water?
Well, a report on the fluoridation of water in our community. I don't know, I don't, I don't know what the wording was. Yeah. So they did.
Well, it's important because it's like either looking, is it, is it a benefit? Is it a negative? How do we remove it? How do we keep it in? I mean, there's lots of different things you could look at.
Right, right. So.
So you got staff to do a report and what came out of that report?
Staff, one of the recommendations was to, that we could take this to the community, get some community input and have a plebiscite or a referendum.
Okay, so staff said if you're interested in removing this, like council could have decided on their own. Could they not have?
Yeah, yeah. But I think what, what came out of that was that we need more community engagement, right? We need to find out from the citizens what they know about it, what they would prefer, that we need some education.
So you could have some public meetings.
Well, we did. Oh, we did.
But you might not necessarily needed to have a referendum.
Uh, right, right. So. Right, right. So eventually, yeah.
I'm just interested in how you came to the referendum decision.
I, well, I think I, 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 I believe that staff and the region thought that this would just, it would be a no brainer, like that we would just leave the fluoride. Nobody care, nobody knows.
Yeah, so staff thought the community would still support keeping fluoride in the water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it would be, it would just go away and whatever.
What was the view around the horseshoe?
Well, it was interesting because I don't, I, nobody came out and said they were totally not that they were supporting the anti-fluoride people. But I think they were interested, well, in finding out more. And again, the same as staff, thinking it's not gonna, it's not gonna go anywhere, right? People will still want fluoride in their water and, and.
Yeah, but, but just hold on a second, Angela, I mean, like, it's, there's cost and time involved in holding a, a plebiscite or a referendum. You don't do that willy nilly, in fact, it's rarely done. But, but on this issue, council could have said, no, we're just gonna leave it as is, we're not gonna go to the community and vote against having a referendum.
Yeah, they could have, I, but he, so, you know, we've got all these anti-fluoride people. Then we've got the region, the Department of Health, the. Oh, oh, yeah, they thought that, they thought that, they thought that fluoride was a gas. Anyway.
Was it what, was it fluoride was what?
A gas. Anyway, I'm not gonna go there either. But, so then, of course, the dentists are coming in, the Ontario Dental Association and the head of the, of the organization at the time with their views, right?
So they're presenting to, they're presenting to council.
Yeah, please leave the fluoride on because it's the best thing since sliced bread, right? But there was, there's, but they couldn't show, yeah, so I don't want to get into that, they couldn't show any signs.
You, you didn't feel like they, they made the clear case for it? Okay, and, and so there's two sides, but I'm just getting at council, councillors, some councillors, obviously, I'm sure some of them felt, no fluoride's fine, let's just leave it. But, and, and then they, they could have said, well, we don't need to vote on a plebiscite for this because we can just as council decide whether we want to have it or not.
Right, and then we, yeah, they could have, although the region is involved as well because they treat the water, the region actually treats the water.
Sure, but the request, the request could have been, hey, region, we as a council want you to take out the fluoride. And but that wasn't gonna be good enough for the region, you thought?
No, no, so, so interesting enough that, so the region decided, yeah, if you wanna, we'll, if you want it, we'll put it on the ballot. But it's interesting too, because I just wanted, my comment that night was just turn it off. So I actually voted against having a plebiscite because I wanted it turned off. Right away, I felt we don't need to do this, we don't need to spend the money, turn it off. And I'll tell you, two of my colleagues voted with me on that, so.
So you didn't, you never moved a motion though, at council to turn off the fluoride?
I probably did, but I don't, I don't, I couldn't come across that in my notes. I probably, I probably did and it got defeated. I, I don't know, I probably did. I probably asked staff to ask the region just to tur, take it out, stop putting it in the water.
Oh, so you think you might have brought a motion to council?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure I would have asked for that. So, so it was interesting because five of my colleagues voted on the, to have the referendum, which was fine, that was great.
Because five out of eight.
Right, yeah, and not me, I wasn't, but anyway, my preference was.
Why did you vote against the referendum? Because you weren't gonna get counsel to support you on your motion?
Because I wanted, I just wanted, I just wanted it turned off. I just knew that the best thing to do for our community, for the health of our citizens was to turn it off right away, let's stop.
Yeah, but, but you, you, if you brought the motion, it wa, it didn't pass, so it wasn't gonna get turned off that way. So the only option you had, wasn't it, then to have a referendum?
Yeah, and I don't know whether I hold my, my colleagues or, anyway, but I did, I took a chance there. But I was making my point, right, that we need to turn it off.
Yeah, sure, hey, look, you can feel strongly on a view, nothing wrong with that, a, a point of view. But I guess you probably didn't think the referendum was gonna be successful in terms of your position on fluoride.
Right, and I, yeah, and I just, again, like, it costs a lot of money and blah, 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 all that stuff, right?
Yeah, whatever your, whatever your reasoning, whatever your, yeah, but the plebiscite, yeah, it's, it's expensive to do. But, but that was the only way you were gonna get it changed.
Well, maybe.
Right, well, how else would you get, there wasn't any other way you were gonna get it changed?
Well, I don't know, I think there might have been, I don't, there, there, there are other ways that might have involved lawyers, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think you want to go that, you don't want to go that route. So you only had either your, your councillor members would vote to support to remove it and then you'd have to finagle with the region. Or you do this plebiscite referendum now.
And work our tails off to get, you know, to get people to vote.
So now it's two, twenty ten and you're running in this, you're running for reelection. Were you, were you opposed in your election?
Oh, yes, by, I think it was just, I didn't write that one down, it was just one person.
Okay, but, and you were campaigning actively on the floor for the anti-fluoride group?
Anti-fluoride and for amalgamation or not.
I know, but we're only focused on one thing here today.
But it was, yeah, so, so the floor, yeah.
What was that like? What was that like? So it must have, so more doors were talking about fluoride then during that campaign, I'll bet.
Yeah, well, probably, yeah, yeah. So people were either, thank you so much, just turn it off, get it out. And other people were, well, the dentists know what they're talking about and how can you, how can you oppose the Ontario Dental Association? And all the health benefits of fluoride and anyway.
They have their strong views, you have your strong views.
So it was tough, it was a tough go.
So what other things did you do to campaign for this fluoride plebiscite? Like, what, what did they do?
We had, we had flyers made up, we did drops, we had, I had, you know, these people that were on this, this committee. They were campaigning for me and, and on the fluoride issue. And, yeah, so we just, we just did all we could to get, to get the information out there. I found a flyer that I came up that we put out about the harmful effects.
Right, and you had signs and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, and buttons, we had some buttons made up.
Were there any, any debates, meetings just focused on fluoride?
Absolutely. So that's another interesting thing because that was in two thousand and ten. And there was a little controversy over whether the city could provide space to have a debate on something that's on the ballot. So we got through all that and the city gave the group, offered up the Hauser House for, we could have three debates. So we have this, it ended up being only one. So it was, and it was very, very controversial. Mike Farwell was the moderator. And so we had, we had a doctor, dentist, doctor, researcher from the States, he came up. Plus our local people, plus the O D A. So the O D A, after that debate, which was very, very controversial, very stressful.
Was it rowdy?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, my God. And but after that, the O D A bailed on the other two debates.
Oh, so there were supposed to be three debates?
Yeah, yeah, there ended up only being one. Yeah, so, and the other, you know, it was interesting too, because they brought their, their buckets of paperwork into the meeting. But we weren't allowed to see it.
So what, why did they bail on the other two?
I don't know, you could ask them.
Yeah, well, I, I won't, but I just thought I would definitely knew.
I think they, I, I don't know, I can't.
Well, how did you feel the debate went?
Oh, I thought it went great because of, because of that. Maybe, and because we asked them if we could see, we could, you know, if they would show us those documents that prove that adding hydrofluorosilic acid to the water is the right thing to do. And if it's effective, right, does it help, right? So, and I, I remember saying that putting hydrofluorosilic acid into our drinking water is like drinking sunscreen. So you don't get a sunburn, right?
All right, the analogies are, there's all sorts of analogies people will be using on both sides. All right, so, so it was a packed house and so that was probably a highlight of the campaign, was this debate?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say so, yeah, and it got, it got a bit of press, the Chronicle was great back then about, you know. Yeah, of course, because it's controversial, right?
So going into the referendum, you, you had, you had a bit of a foreboding or, or feeling that you might lose this referendum?
Of course, yeah.
Did, did it change after things like the debate and the, and just general campaigning that you've had a sense of something different?
No, I just don't take anything for granted, even, you know, even my own campaigns. Like I knocked on every door at least once, every campaign, right? Because I just, I didn't, you know, I, I just, people need to see you and they need to know that you're at their door. And I just can't, I just couldn't take I just, you know, I, I just didn't wanted to, to take for granted that I was gonna win again or that the fluoride was gonna come out of the water.
Well, you, I mean, sure, you don't want to take for granted because you, you'd lost in two thousand and three, won in two thousand and six and now this is twenty ten.
I want another turn.
And, and also you're advocating strongly on your position on fluoride.
Right, right. And, and I was taking the heat from a lot of, a lot of areas, right? So, you know, and even, even the whole bottled water. So I hate bottled water, but if it's, if it doesn't have fluoride in it, people should have that option. Then the water truck, so the region brought that new, I don't know where it is now, if it ever comes out to events, it was a water truck. Where people could refill their bottles.
Yeah.
That's fluoridated water, right? Then there was a big hullabaloo at City Hall because the press, someone had found out, maybe it was me, I forget, that the city actually filters the tap water. So there's all these kind of related.
This all going on during the, during the referendum?
Yeah, probably, or during or after, I don't.
Okay, but, but so now we're back to this, we'll stick with the campaign, we'll just stick with the campaign. So come election day then, I mean, did you guys have like a fluoride team, anti-fluoride team to get the vote out or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah. The people that were helping me on the fluoride thing were dedicated, dedicated, dedicated. Oh, yeah, because a lot of them had health issues and they figured it out that that's what it's from.
About this issue.
Because they felt better without.
Right, so, was there, there was a campaign office too, set up?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, it was mostly, it was mostly by email and, you know, we'd get together, have, you know, meetings.
It was very grassroots.
Very grassroots, very grassroots, yeah.
So on election night then, you must have been.
Oh, yeah.
It was wire to wire, was it?
Oh, yeah, I don't know, did you look at the results?
Yeah, fifty point three percent, I didn't know maybe if one was ahead of the other and it's narrowed over time or.
Yeah, but I have to say, when I went at the end of, well, tour, after my little party, I went to, forget the name, what used to be Alibaba, whatever that place was, where the mayor, where Mayor Halloran was having her party. And so I walked in there and my colleagues, my female colleagues congratulated me and gave me a hug on the fluoride thing. So I'm going, oh, my God, like that meant a lot to me, you know, that they, I had worked so hard, I was so passionate about that. And I, you know, yeah, so.
But that wasn't the final step though, right? I mean, because the region didn't have to follow that because you didn't get, again, another municipal election without fifty or more percent of the votes of the community.
Right, but they said, the region said they would honor it, they would, they would go by.
So what I'm alluding to is generally if a plebiscite or referendum doesn't have participation from more than fifty percent of the community, there's some question as to whether or not it's binding on the community.
Right.
And, but in this case, so the region said, they said in advance, did they, whichever way the vote goes?
Yeah, yeah, which was awesome.
So did you have to present to the region during, during all of this too, on this issue or?
I don't think I did, I don't, that would have been really intimidating. But my colleague, my, my grassroots fluoride, anti-fluoride people.
Okay.
They were on it all the time, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, so once it was done then and you received this referendum, I guess it was, was there anything left to do for the new council? Other than just make sure it was, it went through?
Well, yeah, and that was my, so then I'm on them, I'm on the region. When's it, when are you gonna turn off the tap? When you, when are you shutting it down? Like, and I want to be there when you do it. Well, that caused a little stir too.
Because you want to cut the ribbon.
Well.
Turn the top, you wanted to ceremonially turn the top.
Yeah, yeah. So I have photos of this too. I went there to the pumping station.
Which one?
On Regina Street.
Oh, yeah.
And I had been there before for kind of like a tour, just to see. But I went there when they, I found out, I don't know who told me, someone told me when they were gonna, the region, the people were gonna go there. They were wearing hazmat suits. So what does that tell you?
Oh, I don't know, maybe there's a lot of asbestos in the building.
You know, like, yeah.
Did you get a hazmat suit?
No, I, I didn't even go near, like I went close enough to take a photo.
Okay.
They, but they, they, they didn't want any fanfare or any kind of, you know, press on.
What was the, what was the reaction like after the vote? I mean, when it's fifty, when it's that close, right? I mean, there must have been some pushback, maybe.
I personally didn't get, I got letters or notes from people saying thank you.
And some other letters?
I saw a couple of letters, yeah.
Thank you?
Yeah, well, you know, and, and I have to say, this is a bugaboo of mine in politics overall, you have to vote, right? People don't vote, the voter turnout in this community, just, it's terrible when people say.
Every community is bad, it's not just this one, but especially, what's, what's worse is at the municipal level. And that is where people should understand, this has the most, I mean, look at, look at the fluoride decision. That has the most direct impact, everyone from turning on their top, brushing their teeth, showering, whatever, whatever. But there you go, that's a direct impact.
Yeah, exactly. So I just, yeah. Anyway, it's all very interesting to me, but I, and it's, it was pretty much over.
After the vote?
After the vote, it was, yeah, I know, yeah.
So, and, and no one on council tried to reverse that at all or anything?
No, 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 there might have been a few comments from a couple of people, but no.
So, so that started from nothing, like not an idea at all that you had or campaigned on. And it moved along to the point where it had a significant impact on the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you ever had anything else like that happen?
No, no, that was my, that was the big, and one that I don't, don't like to talk about. I don't like to bring it up because people get really enraged or really, you know, passionate, right? So I've just, I have just like kind of kept under the wire.
See, in, in my profession as a lawyer, we, you know, we'll argue motions. You go to court, you each present your side, judge makes a decision, you move on to the next issue.
Right. Yeah.
So now, but a group can always come forward and, and put fluoride back in.
Uh, they could, well, they could try, they could try.
They could try, right? So, so if there's a group that wants to advocate, they can come forward and, and try and do that.
Well, the other, the other thing is I haven't heard a thing from, you know, one of the region health that there's, you know, kids' teeth are falling out because they don't have fluoride in the water anymore, right? There's been nothing about that. So, you know, there's fluoride, fluoride works topically, right? So you, and it's, and it's in your beer, it's in your wine, it's in your juices, you know, yeah, yeah.
So, but Kitchener has fluoride in their water?
No, never.
Oh, they never did?
Never did, no, no, but Waterloo, back in the, whatever, the sixties, I guess it was. Oh, they were gonna do this great thing and, and put this, this toxic waste from fertilizer plants into the water. Let's try to get that in there.
Editorializing here. To talk about it. But you know what, that's, that's a really interesting story because it just shows the power, the, that you have. Because you're the, you're a lawmaking body, people don't, you know, think about it, you can, you create laws, whether it's fireworks or chickens in the backyard or whatever.
Yeah, policy, yeah.
You know, you can create laws and you can, you can initiate them. But you know, you can create laws and you can, you can initiate them, you can change them, you can pull them back and rescind them.
Yeah, you can have, you can have an impact, right?
So you have a lot of power and that's why they, that's why they call you councillor.
Right, okay then.
You know, you go in feeling like I'm just the same, you know, normal old me as I was before, but you're not. You have like some power now. You've got a vote that creates laws. So that's why. And, and so, you know, sometimes maybe it's good to, um, all of us to recognize that. And by saying the word councillor or your worship, we're recognizing the importance of the position. Uh, you know, some recognition of what can be done in the community and, and, and how significant that is uh, that people don't really realize. Because, you know, whenever you ask anyone who's been a municipal, I know, uh, you know, municipal politicians, for the most part, I mean, I'll ask you, uh, we're, we're gonna get into it in another show about all the things you did. But you tell me, what was your experience like overall as a municipal politician?
Oh, I have no regrets. I loved it. I loved every minute of it, every minute of it. And I, I just met so many people. I learned so much about, uh, you know, administration, politics, policy, um, the community, like the people that I met um, across the board as a, as a city councillor was just amazing. But I think, and I'm not, I don't, I don't advocate for term limits, but I think there's a time, right? When it's, you know, in four terms for me, sixteen years was, I just think that for me was plenty.
Well, we'll talk some more about the term limit concept uh, later on because, you know, uh, there's always something to be said about bringing in new, fresh people. Look, you were new and fresh and look what you did. You got fluoride, you got rid of fluoride.
Right, right, right. And then, but then there's good to have, like even on our current council in Waterloo, Diane Freeman's golden, right? Like she, she's the statesperson for our council and we need to have that, you need to have that history there, right? So.
History helps, but you know, there's always other people that can carry on the history too.
Sure, 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 yeah.
Okay, so listen, Angela, thanks for sharing that uh, story with us today. Uh, I'm glad we got into that topic and uh, gives a little bit of an insight into how, you know, this, this, uh, this idea just germinated from nothing to become this significant uh, plebiscite, which is a significant aspect of the history of Waterloo and Waterloo region in terms of what happened. And at the same time, we had the amalgamation uh, uh, referendum going on too, which was interesting.
Right, and we haven't had a plebiscite since, I don't think.
No, I don't think you have. No, I don't think you have. So, so next show, we're gonna pick it up and start talking about some of the other things. Some of the, some of the other trouble you got into uh, that you caused as you were a councillor.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Angela.
Thanks, Rob. That was great. Take care.
Okay, you too. Uh, thank you for listening to another edition of the Old Gray Mayor's Podcast. If you have any ideas for stories or people you would like us to interview or reach out to, please feel free to contact us and thank you again.